If you please rise and join us in Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to be the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing, I'd like to invite Pastor Chris Scheneman with New Song Church to provide tonight's invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's pray. Gracious God, Maker of all things, we come before you tonight with thankful hearts, Lord. Thankful to be citizens of a free land, thankful, Lord, to be members of this community of Harrison. And we're thankful for your blessing on our community. We ask tonight that you would continue to extend blessing to us. We ask that you would keep watch over our first responders as they work, as they put themselves in harms way for our sakes. We ask, Lord, that you would bless the work of the city workers that keep our town running. And, Lord, we ask tonight that you'd bless the work of this council. Lord, as the world around us seems to be more and more anxious, I pray that you would bless them with peace and with wisdom as they conduct the affairs of this city. That they would work diligently and that they would be your servants in this place. We invite your presence tonight and we ask in your name, amen.
Thank you.
Wilson, Egner.
Here.
Grubbs, Samuels.
Here.
Dole.
Here.
Maynes.
Here.
Hackworth.
Here.
Do we, anybody like to excuse Ms. Wilson or Mr. Grubbs?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mr. Grubbs and Mrs. Wilson.
Okay. One second. We were made aware of their absences, so we have motion, second to excuse them from this evening. Take your roll call, please.
Egner.
Yeah.
Samuels.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
Maynes.
Yay.
Hackworth.
Yay.
First item on this evening's agenda is approval of the council meeting minutes from February 18th, 2020.
So move.
Second. Any additions, corrections need to be made? Hearing none, will you please take the roll?
Samuels.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
Maynes.
Yay.
Hackworth.
Yay.
Egner.
Yay.
Next is the invited guest and visitor Shannon.
Mayor, members of council, regrettably, the business was not able to be here tonight, but they hope to be here next month, so we'll save the information for that.
Okay, see, Michelle, with libraries here, do you have something you'd like to say this evening? Okay, you were very, 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 I didn't want to put you on the spot, but you were very informative the last time you spoke about the libraries program that was going on.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council. So, last time I was here, I was talking about the strategic, or I'm sorry, the facilities master plan and the updates and everything. Harrison is slated to get a strategic investment, and on Thursday, we're gonna have a meeting with other managers who are also managing branches that are gonna get strategic investment to find out a little bit more about what that might be for the Harrison. But the big news is that we recently received a donation from Cincinnati Incorporated, and we were able to purchase these blocks. They're like these big green blocks, they're in different shapes, and we were, because the donation was so generous, we were able to get two, I don't know, I'm thinking piles, but that's not the right word, but two of them. And so now, in our children's room, we have these great big huge tubs of these green blocks, and the kids are just building away at them, and it's been so cool to see because it's not just typically in the play area, it's younger kids, preschool age, who play in the dramatic play, but we're seeing like, like eight, 10, 12-year-old boys playing, so it's been kinda nice, so that's my big news.
Okay.
Do you have any questions for me?
Thanks for the update, and it's wonderful to hear that the local community's supporting the library.
Yes, they gave us a donation for the children's and then also for Memory Cafe, so I think I've talked about it before, but Memory Cafe is a place for folks that are suffering from cognitive impairments and their care partner to come into the library in like a safe space and just have a shared experience. So, they gave some money towards that, and we're able to get some more presenters for Creative Aging, through Creative Aging for our Memory Cafes, so that's been nice, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other visitors that did not sign up that would like to speak this evening? Okay, we'll move on. We have no business on the agenda, do we have anything we need to add?
Great, we'll move straight into reports, it'll be a nice short meeting. My report's gonna consist of one announcement, and that is that the February, I'm sorry, the March 17th meeting will be moved to the 18th. We have legislation that if a council meeting falls on a primary or general election evening is moved to the following night on Wednesday. So the February, or the March 17th meeting will not be held on Tuesday evening, the 17th, it will be held March 18th. All the committee meetings will be moved to the same, the same way to the next night from that Tuesday to Wednesday. It is the same night that the township normally meets here, they're moving their meeting to their civic center out on New Haven Road that evening, so there will not be a conflict in the building. If you are gonna come here for that township meeting, please go to the council, their civic center on New Haven Road, but the council will be meeting here on the 18th. And that concludes my report. The law director informed me this afternoon, he's ill and does not want to spread his illness, he's not feeling well, so he is not here, we'll move on to the committee reports, and we'll start with Mr. Egner.
Look at the IT committee met tonight, we discussed the HCC update, it seems like for the most part, it's going off pretty successfully. The streets is having unusual, the street department's having an unusual problem right now, they're trying to get that worked out within the next week. March 18th, the server conversion's gonna go, gonna happen with the general server and the financial, the finance server. All of the, all the phone numbers have been assigned in the city. And then, we're also gonna start working on all of the IT-related policies, we're gonna update those over the next month or two, and that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Samuels, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, I do, Mayor, thank you. First off, the next social media committee meeting will occur on April 21st at 8:30 a.m. at the Coffee Peddler, so that committee usually meets on a quarterly basis, so that is our next scheduled meeting. The finance committee did meet, and really, three big topics we talked about, we actually had a representative from RBC come in and kind of review the recent bond restructuring that was, I believe, completed in 2019, but they were, just came in and kind of gave us a review for the committee members who were new to council this year. In total, it's gonna provide over a million dollars' worth of savings, of which, most of the savings will be seen on the early payoff, they won't see it on an annual basis, but on the tail end of the debt. We also talked about our policies and procedures, we are currently reviewing policies for credit card, travel, purchase orders, and fund balancing, so each of the committee members have kind of been tasked with reviewing some policies and providing some feedback. I do want to say a big thank you to the City of Dublin who did provide some information to us. Kathy had said that they are, the state of Ohio has recognized their policies and procedures as the gold standard, so we did reach, or I did reach out to them, and they were more than happy to send some policies and procedures down, just as a general guideline, so. And last but not least, the software upgrade, they are still looking at three different options. I think two options have been identified, I believe they're looking for a third option just to review, just to have a variety to choose from. I believe they are looking to implement this, hopefully in 2021. And the reason, and I don't think, when I've talked about this before, that they're looking into this is, the existing system that they have is being sunsetted with no support, so they are gonna have to move to a new system sometime soon, so that's all I have. Unless you guys have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dole, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor, thank you. This evening, City Engineer JMA, their firm was here to give us an update on a half a dozen projects that they've got going on for us right now. I'll start, I wanna run through some of our street projects that have been ongoing. The first one we discussed was the reconstruction of Madison and Washington Street down here in downtown. That project has been underway, and they were able to complete, it was scheduled for a spring completion, but they're in pretty good shape down there, they've got some punchless stuff to do still, to finalize that project out, but with the warm winter we had, they were able to get a pretty good jump on everything. The second item, I've had some folks ask me about Park Avenue and Dare Avenue and May Drive, these are streets that have been on our list. Every year, the streets in the City of Harrison, we go through and we submit for skip funds or LTIP funds, there are a variety of funding applications that we can put in for, for these streets, and every year, a lot of the streets score different depending on who else submits their streets, what other municipalities, and what kind of shape they're in. This year, unfortunately, Park, Dare, May Drive, and part of Harrison Avenue, the grant applications for these, the scores were not high enough to receive grant funding. We are planning on reapplying, of course, for these and any other projects that come before us as an issue in September for funding in construction year 2021. One project that did get funded through the Ohio Public Works Commission was the, there's a project at Dry Fork and West Road up by the new schools that we're building. That is currently being designed, we're coordinating with the school district on that, it should be bid in the fall, construction on that would take place in construction season 2021. We got an update on some ODOT activities, they've reviewed some of our conceptual plans for some different streets and interchanges with ODOT, we went through a lot of information on that, and then, we had authorized them to, along with a consultant of theirs, TEC Engineering, perform safety studies on the Harrison Avenue corridor from New Haven Road all the way up to West at the entrance of Kroger's, as well as from West Road from New Haven on up to, across the highway down by the fire station up there. They brought the executive summaries to committee meeting tonight, and we went through and reviewed everything. We have, went ahead and we're gonna move forward with the grant application for the West Road improvements, those are more of a long-term fix, so we need to get that application in by April to get funding possibly for that. And with the Harrison Avenue study, there was a multitude of both short and long-term fixes for some of the safety issues along Harrison Avenue corridor there, so we are gonna take some time and review those findings, but it was very clear what the, there was one recommendation for West Road, and it was, as we have thought the whole time, increase the lane width for sidewalk, or increase the sidewalk width will be in addition to the bridge, sidewalks from New Haven on up and connecting into the West Road sidewalks on the other side of the intersection. In the meantime, at West Road, it was kind of one of our discussions, with the ODOT safety funds, that project would probably not begin construction until summer 2022, so we had resident, a couple residents at this meeting tonight, and we kind of talked it around, and we're gonna go ahead and put up caution pedestrian signs on both sides of the West Road overpass to do what we can in the meantime to try to slow people down up there. That's a lot for streets. As far as the utilities committee, we also met tonight, and we discussed a couple projects we've got going on, but I wanted to address our rate structure and the increase in rates for 2020, your utility bills, which probably came out yesterday or today, depending on where you live in the city. I've gotten some calls from people, some people sent me their bills, and I've kind of sat down and tried to backfigure these out. The way that our format of our bills works, with the 2020 rate increases, people are now being charged a service fee every month, depending on the size meter that you've got in your house. Now, this is something that we did not do in the past, we, when we hired our consultant to look at our rate structure for our water department, they do lots of other municipalities in the area, so we got to look at what everybody else is charging, how they are charging, how they, you know, and it was clear to us that we were billing in a very, it was an antiquated system, the way that we were going through and doing this. So to keep our water department solvent, that's why these rate increases have to happen, to keep us up to date and to keep our plan in good shape. But what we are going to do, folks, I think, are getting confused, they're seeing their water charge on their water bill, and they're not registering that there is a service fee that's in that, so you can't take the number of thousand gallons you've used and divide that by your total water fee like you used to be able to do to figure out how much you're paying per thousand. Based on your water meter size, there is a service fee that you can find on the utility department website, you've got to subtract that from that water fee first. So what we're gonna do moving forward, we're going to change the format of the bills so that they're easier to read, you're gonna see right on that bill where, boom, for my size meter, I'm paying this much in a base water service fee for that meter, for the infrastructure, that's just what you pay right off the top, and then, you'll see your per thousand gallon rate, and that'll be your water service fee for the water itself. So there'll be one line for a service fee and one line for water charges, so I hope it's clear, it'll make things a little easier to understand. The only other item I've got, Mr. Mayor, is there's a planning commission meeting on March 10th at 7:30 p.m. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Maynes, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do, thank you. Let's see, I'd like to thank Chris Scheneman for giving our invocation tonight, and, I'm sorry, I missed the name of the lady.
Michelle Elliott.
Michelle, Michelle Elliott? Thank you, Michelle. What's that?
That's me.
That's you, yes, thank you for coming up tonight on short notice and put on the spot. Before I forget, Mr. Mayor, I would like to request that we go to executive session following, we retire to executive session after the end of a regular council meeting for an economic development item.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, will you please take the roll?
Dole.
Yay.
Maynes.
Yay.
Hackworth.
Yay.
Egner.
Yeah.
Samuels.
Yay.
After the reports are completed, we retire to executive session.
So the first thing on my report is, there is a roadside litter cleanup Saturday, April the 4th, that's from 9:00 to 12:00 p.m., they're gonna meet at the Whitewater Township Community Center, Allen Dry Fork Road, 6125 Dry Fork Road. This is hosted by We Thrive in Whitewater Township, the folks at Green Acres are heavily involved in this, I know that Mrs. Wilson, Mr. Samuels, and Representative Abrams have all expressed interest in attending, I saw their interest on the Facebook page. Certainly, you can go to the We Thrive in Whitewater Township Facebook page to express your interest in this event, you can also find that event on my Facebook page, I posted it today, if you need some more information on that. The Doug Dunaway Track, we've had some interest on, and lots of questions with the warm weather, when are we gonna open? And right now, we're targeting a mid-March to mid-April open, and that will be track, and weather conditions permitting, the track is currently closed, we had some confusion this weekend about that, we have some issues with this website called Rider Planet, we need to clean up, and I've emailed them, and they've already corrected some of those issues, I'll make sure that that's taken care of. I believe, one of the phone numbers out there is for the police department, and the police department's asked me to take that number down, not to bother them with that, and we'll get folks to look at the Facebook page to find out whether we're open or closed on a particular day. I did walk the track on Sunday, there are several trees that need to be cleared, track was a bit muddy on Sunday, maybe it was ridable, you know, at this point in time, but we'll see what the weather and that all does for that. Some good news on equipment rental, Sunbelt rental, we have a fellow that rides, Chris O'Leary, who also drives a truck for Sunbelt, he can deliver equipment to the track on the weekends, and Sunbelt's gonna provide that, we also have a volunteer that contacted me today that has equipment that he'd be willing to allow us to use on the track, so we'll be getting that track up to shape, and we hope to have it groomed several times during the season this year. On economic development, we met this evening, I have it here somewhere, there it is, the new UDF on New Haven Road is expected to open on Friday, March 13th, obviously, they are not superstitious, good for them, neither am I. The grand opening celebration will be Saturday, March 28th, at this point, we don't have a time for that grand opening, but we'll announce that, I would guess we would be able to do that probably by the next council meeting, on our Wednesday, not Tuesday, third Tuesday coming up here. Five Guys Burgers and Fries, if you've been following along, they're starting to move pretty quickly on their remodel of the old Gold Star Building site, and Make Me a Pizza on 606 Ring Road in the former Orange Leaf locality are both expected to open in April, so they're progressing rapidly on both of those facilities, it'll be exciting to have a couple of new restaurants here in town. Footers have begun, the construction on footers have begun at the Trilogy Health Services Assisted Living Facility on Progress Way, that is slated for an early 2021 open. John, you're in the audience, are we having any issues there with Trilogy? Did we get that all straightened out? Excellent, good, they're staying off your property, that's what we need, very good. We have work continuing with our local residents and Duke Energy to try to get some banners displayed for our veterans along New Haven Road and Harrison Avenue, we'll have more about that coming soon, that'll be exciting to be able to recognize our veterans in a very visible way on our major streets here in town. We have the Wall That Heals, this is a two-thirds replica display of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial. This will be at the Harrison VFW from June 11th to June 14th. We already have three local companies, JTM, F&amp;M, MAFCO, and Geograph, that have committed donations totaling $2,500, it requires $10,000 to bring the wall here, to bring that memorial here. So, if you know of any individuals or companies that are interested in donating, they should contact Shannon Hammons, and he will be glad to get that taken care of, that'll be an exciting display. If you've ever been to Washington DC to see the Vietnam's memorial, it's powerful, so that'll be exciting to bring two-thirds replica here to Harrison. And the next meeting for the Economic Development Committee will be Tuesday, April the 7th. Again, you can contact Shannon Hammons if you have any questions or comments regarding our economic development meeting. The last thing I want to report on, Mr. Mayor, is I had the privilege on Saturday to attend the 7th Annual Taking Root Great Tree Summit, this was held at Camp Freelander, which is out on the east side of town, what a fantastic facility, I've driven by it many times, but this is the first time I actually got to walk on the premises, I had several folks present, one of the fellows that there was Pat Greeson, and if you folks remember, Pat Greeson gave the Arbor Day presentation here in Harrison last year, and we talked for a bit, and he said, what about having the Tree Summit here in Harrison, Ohio, next year or in the following year, and I said, sure, we'd be glad to do that. So, we'll have some discussions about bringing the Tree Summit, it's a great, just a great event, a fellow by the name of Bill Fountain, Dr. Bill Fountain from the University of Kentucky, great, gave a great presentation on preserving our existing trees that we have under management, as well as several other folks that presented on all the great activities and all the abilities that we can do to reforest our urban canopy, so it was, I'm glad I went to that, it's the second time I've been able to attend that, and that was, I'm gonna try to get our tree board, whole tree board to go to that in the coming year, I'm excited about our upcoming tree board meeting, end of the month regarding that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
So you can mark off announcing the grand opening on the 13th, or meeting on the 18th, that'll be a little late. Shannon can get that up on our social media websites.
It's on? No, no, it opens Friday, the March 13th, but the grand opening is Saturday, March 28th. Did I mistake that?
The 28th?
Soft opening is. The soft opening is the 13th, but the grand opening will be the 28th.
Okay.
They're gonna be open a couple days before the 28th.
Right, so we'll have the exact time for the grand opening on the 28th, by the next council meeting.
Okay, so, and we'll get that up on the social media also. Okay, thanks, Mike. Mr. Hackworth, do you have a report this evening?
I do, Mayor. First, Mr. Dole, the project at West and Dry Fork, is that still the idea of doing a roundabout, is that still the way that's headed?
Yeah, currently, yes.
Okay, just thought I'd ask. So we did not have a law committee this meeting, we've decided to move those to every other month, so our next law committee meeting will be April 7th. A reminder that March is the community tap at the Tap Room 1860 is for the police department for this month, so if you're in the mood, stop by and get a little drink and help out the police department. I have a cough, it's not coronavirus, so don't worry, but I have to drink or else my throat will mess up, so unfortunately, this is the long part of my report, Mayor. Hamilton County recently disseminated some information about the coronavirus, and I think it'd be prudent that we would read it for the people of Harrison so that they understand more about it and kind of what Hamilton County's view is. Obviously, we're part of Hamilton County, and we're actually one of the areas that would be affected if they decide to turn things up and if it got to a different level, so I'm gonna read this, and if I have to stop to take a drink, I apologize. Hamilton County Department of Public Health, coronavirus information. What is Novell coronavirus? 2019 Novell coronavirus is a virus, more specifically a coronavirus, identified as the cause of an outbreak of respiratory illness first detected in Wuhan, China. Early on, many of the patients in the outbreak in Wuhan, China reportedly had some link to a large seafood and animal market, suggesting animal-to-person spread. However, a growing number of patients reportedly have not had exposure to animal markets, indicating person-to-person spread is occurring. At this time, it's unclear how easily or sustainably this virus is spreading between people. So how does the Novell coronavirus spread? Much is unknown about how, I'm gonna shorten it to COVID-19, a new coronavirus spreads. Current knowledge is largely based on what is known about similar coronaviruses. Coronaviruses are a large family of viruses that are common in many different species of animals, including camels, cattle, cats, and bats. Rarely, animal coronaviruses can affect people and then spread between people, such as it was with MERS, SARS, and now with the 2019 coronavirus. Most often, spread from person-to-person happens among close contacts, about six feet. Person-to-person spread is thought to occur mainly via respiratory droplets produced when an infected person coughs or sneezes, similar to how influenza and other respiratory pathogens spread. These droplets can land in the mouths or noses of people who are nearby, or possibly be inhaled into the lungs. It's currently unclear if a person can get 2019 coronavirus by touching a surface or object that has the virus on it and then touching their own mouth, nose, or possibly their eyes. Typically, with most respiratory viruses, people are thought to be most contagious when they are most symptomatic, when they're the sickest. With 2019 coronavirus, however, there have been reports external icon of spread from an infected person with no symptoms to a close contact. It's important to note that how easily a virus spreads person-to-person can vary. Some viruses are highly contagious, like measles, while other viruses are less so. There is much more to learn about the transmissibility, severity, and other features associated with 2019 coronavirus, and investigations are ongoing. This information will further inform the risk assessment, and there's a link in this document, which this will be on our webpage, by the way, it is already out there, that you can click on to get the latest situation summary for the virus. So what are the symptoms? For confirmed coronavirus-19 infections, reported illnesses have ranged from people with little to no symptoms to people being severely ill and dying. Symptoms can include fever, cough, and shortness of breath. The CDC believes at this time, the symptoms of coronavirus-19 may appear in as few as two days or as long as 14 days after exposure. This is based on what has been seen previously as the incubation period of the MERS viruses. How can I protect myself? There is currently no vaccine to prevent coronavirus-19 infection. The best way to prevent infection is to avoid being exposed to the virus. However, as a reminder, CDC always recommends everyday preventative actions to help prevent the spread of respiratory viruses, including wash your hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds, especially- wash your hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds, especially after going to the bathroom, before eating, and after blowing your nose, coughing, or sneezing. If soap and water are not readily available, use an alcohol-based hand sanitizer with at least 60% alcohol. Always wash hands with soap and water if hands are visibly dirty. Avoid touching your eyes, nose, and mouth with unwashed hands. Avoid close contact with people who are sick. Stay home when you are sick. Cover your cough or sneeze with a tissue, then throw the tissue in the trash. Clean and disinfect frequently touched objects and surfaces using a regular household cleaning spray or wipe. So as far as the City of Harrison, public safety and civil defense, so our next civil defense committee meeting, civil defense committee meeting, we're going to focus on the needed preparations for dealing with a potential state or local and regional outbreaks of the virus. And we're going to have that information, it may already be on the website as well, well, it's not yet, because we haven't talked about it yet, I apologize. So once we get that kind of figured out, we'll post that information as well. So all in all, I think, there's been, excuse me, there's been a lot of information out there, a lot of, I think, fear mongering and things like that, so this is kind of straight from the horse's mouth, you know, that it's, it's another virus, it's, it's known, but we just need to keep diligent in the way that we deal with it. And from a city standpoint, we're on board with the state, the county, and we're going to take part in whatever needs to take part, so, Mayor, that is my report for tonight.
Okay. That concludes this evening's session, we're going to retire into executive session.